Four o'clock, I'll call the regular session to the town council to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, under the call to order, I want to add a couple of things. Council on your consent calendar, um, number A, we need to add a Newman, um, the June twenty-four council meeting minutes.
June twenty-four?
On June twenty-four, yeah, we have the others, but the wasn't included in the packet. And the other thing I'd like to do is, pardon?
June twenty, you mean the AP or minutes?
No, the minutes were missing also. Well, you didn't forget them, the minutes are in there, it's just not listed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's in there, it's just not listed, so. Um, and then the other thing I'd like to do is welcome Amy and introduce her to all the council. Amy Hopples, she's going to be replacing, uh, Christie, so welcome Amy. We have no public hearing, so public comment, looks like we have some public comment. State your name for the record if you would please and go right ahead ladies.
Sandy Albertson, and I have a water issue problem. I live down on, um, South Page Street between Tenth and Eleventh Street. And apparently years ago, somebody put water to my house. Um, I don't know how they say it, through John Uchery's, it's actually John, um, Ruth and Jerry Hale's property. But I was teed off of their water line to my house. And I have no water pressure, basically. And this last fall, I had a water leak under the road, so I replaced my water line. And then I put a shut-off valve in there so I could bypass John and Sheila's house and hook into the main line that we thought was there. So we could get away from the water pressure issues that we're all having. When we all have our water on, I basically have no water to flush my toilet. So this fall, or this, a few weeks ago, I've been working with Ron and the city guys dug up the water line that we thought ran through the alleyway, because that's where the main line he thought was going. Well, it doesn't, it goes through somebody else's property up to G Street. But it's only a one-inch pipe that's feeding, uh, we guess eight houses on. So I was wondering if there's something we can do to fix the problem, basically. Anyway, I have a letter and a picture of the drawing of what the, what we think the water pipe looks like. Or the, we keep calling it a main line, it's not a main line, it's a one-inch service line. So anyway, that's mine.
So is your letter here to annex into this town, is that, is that what you're requesting?
I have got it, a bad and a picture, I mean, I don't know what your proceedings are.
I really know that she would be against that if that's what it takes, I mean.
Actually, council, I have been discussing this a little bit with Ray. You want to kind of mention or talk about what you and I talked about?
Well, there's, you know, to further explain, I guess, the situation. It appears from what Ron's shared with me that there's maybe as many as seven different places being served off of this, this one-inch or, uh, one-inch line in the area. How in the world there any of them, any by, I guess is sort of a mystery to me. But, uh, again, it's outside of town, so, so it's not within, you know, it's not within the town's boundary. Just on how this all came to be is, whoever knows about that isn't with us any longer, I guess. Uh, so, so there's some options that come to my mind, just thinking of what our, our policies and ordinances are with the town of Lakeview, uh, without having dug them all out and read them again at this point at least, is, uh, one of the, one solution to this would be if the, all of the people who are affected there were to be willing to annex into town. And if they would do that, then, you know, we do have a water line project planned for later, uh, you know, during this budget year and, and, uh, you know, we could, you know, if those folks were within the town of Lakeview, then we could probably, uh, move one of those projects and do a block of water line down there to provide a, a main line as, uh, you know, to address this and put services off of it, uh, for the, for the new customers that we would have, or the customers that are down here, that did be within the town of Lakeview. So, so that's one thing that could be done. The other one is, and this has happened at least one other instance that I'm aware of before I came to the town, and that is, there's a main line that goes down South Eleventh Street now, is, it's actually in the county. Uh, but it was built by a group of people, and it was Orville Layton, Matt Outland, Gerald Stewart, and I believe it was, uh, I can't think of his first name, Bujua, that was the dentist. Tom Bujua.
Eye doctor.
Uh, that was the eye doctor here lately, not dentist, I'm sorry, at that time. And, and what they did was that they were developing a piece of property. And they built the water, the water, I don't know about the sewer line, just water line, I think it was, the sewer was already there. Uh, water line down Eleventh Street and paid for it. And then as, uh, new customers may have hooked up to it over time, and I believe there's, it's either ten or fifteen years that, that it was set up to last, then those, those new users of the line would reimburse some portion of the cost back to the original developers. And so it wasn't, you know, the town was aware of this and, you know, we kind of coordinated it happening, but it wasn't our property. And so that's, it eventually became ours, um, but that reimbursement period is now elapsed. So, you know, those are a couple of things that could happen. You know, they could build the line and we, you know, we can, after it's built, built to our standards, we did this on, down by Christie's house, on E Street, uh, not so long ago, a couple, no, four, five years ago, where we, uh, allowed Terry Uplake to build a water line and after it was built, we accepted it, it was built to our standards. So, you know, other than that, I don't know what other options there really are.
The other was the Forest Service new complex that went in, that developer extended that water main down the highway and paid for it and then we took that name over.
That's, yeah.
Have you ever asked your neighbors or have you talked to them about annexing or any of these?
No, I, no Ruth and Jerry Hale.
Uh-uh.
I've talked to them, but Ruth was going to be here today, but not, no. I just wanted to let you guys know the situation down there and I didn't know where to proceed from here.
And I believe there's at least two, if not three or four of those homes that are vacant right now.
At this time, yes.
And they still, I mean, so if they ever move in, she's going to, it's going to be.
When Ray told me that there's that many houses on a one-inch line, it just seems impossible, but, you know, apparently it was, it was bootlegged, I would be my guess sometime in the past. It's not legal hookups and it's just never had been a problem, but, but I, you know, like Ray listed those two solutions, I, I really think the easiest and the best of the, you know, or the easiest for the property owners would be to discuss annexation on that and, and, you know, annex into the town and then that makes it our responsibility on the, on the water line. And as Ray mentioned, this is a year that we happen to have some money that it's dedicated to some other projects, but I believe it could be pretty easily swallowed or moved, couldn't it?
The only way Sandy can get away from going across anybody's property was just a main coming from Eleventh down H, where she could tie in front H, um, if we put anything down the alley, it would have to go down H Street. She would be, uh.
But that would, that would take big annexing for us to do that, right?
Well, it's not, it's not fair to move, uh, a new, new main line for residents of the town of Lakeview to a place outside of town.
Right.
I, you know, quite honestly, I guess I would say that's to start with, is, you know, we provide the service first to the, uh, to our customers within the annexed area of town. And then, uh, you know, unless there's a provision made, like they build it and then we'll accept maintenance of it, that's what we do outside of town. We don't disregard the need to service the lines that already exist outside of Lakeview, but, but when it comes to improving those lines, it's really the, those landowners' responsibilities at this point in time.
Do we have the lines run down in that area that have the volume to feed another main?
Yes, there's nothing on Tenth, there's a little loop down on the, what is it, L and K that a developer put in. Uh, he developed those lots. So we could put a lot, a large-sized main and put a hydrant on the end so we can flush it at this time until something went down Tenth. But this is not the only problem down there. They're probably one of the worst, but I know of two other alleys that have three to four houses on the same line.
And seven other homes, but some of them are vacant, are they rental properties or, or?
Absentee owners.
Absentee?
One of it's Mr. Rupert and I think he's not able to live a home alone anymore, but he was living there.
I'm just thinking it's going to be difficult for you to get a hold of absentee owners or renters or somebody that will vote for annex because.
The other major is Forest Bradley. Down there with the big house that's being remodeled at this time.
She can't choose to just annex herself and?
I was going to say, I mean, I have a whole neighborhood.
I believe it has to be, by our planning, it has to be a certain Rupert block or something that could, you know.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
To annex, can't just annex her property.
No, it has to be contiguous with, uh.
Some other property.
With something else, what we would need to do would be probably annex, we'd have to take in Eleventh Street starting down towards the industrial park and come up Eleventh Street to, at least to H, uh, which is three blocks more than we currently have, I think it's three blocks. So we would come up there, we'd take, we would annex Eleventh Street and then these properties that are, uh, on H, and H Street, and then these properties are contiguous to H Street. Then we could, we wouldn't have to take every property on H Street, uh, but that's how we would have to do it. We'd have to take in streets from the county road system, which, uh, and then annex these properties off of each.
Does hearing all that help you or give you a direction on where to go? I, I know it's not the solution that she's looking for, not very rapid either.
No, I figured we weren't going to give a solution right now, but I just wanted to make you guys aware of there is a problem down there and I'd like to see it, so see what I can do with this, my problem anyway. And if the city can't or won't help, can I drill a well?
There's no, outside is the only, yeah, there's, you can drill a well.
I can drill a well, okay. That was my other option that I was, yeah, was drilling probably a well.
Do people around you have the wells?
Everybody on my side of the street share is on a well without me, so, yeah.
Because I know my folks had a place down there at the end of what would have been Tenth, am I right? Where Elm Trailer Court, that, and Tenth, they had a place down there and they had the water, but they had so much iron in it, it was nasty stuff, you could not drink a cup of coffee after you made it with that stuff, it's ugly. So you, I would want to be real sure before I did that, because it's costly.
Yeah, I know my neighbor Sam Goss has a well, but they don't drink the water, but.
But it doesn't seem the people that have a well are going to take likely to annexing into the city.
I don't see.
It's possibly not.
Yeah, it, it would make a difference in your taxes.
I don't know, you guys, what else, I mean, what else could we do, we are aware of it and I think probably our best solution is, is to annex or, you know.
All of you agree to build a new water line, we'll, we'll take responsibility for it after.
Yeah, and, and the people with bad wells might be interested in doing that too, or other things, or guess maybe.
And again, it's not, don't hold him to it, I just wanted to ask Ron if you have any idea what cost to build a block of water line?
Depends on whether we get over out of the asphalt and, I'm trying to think what the last bid came in.
So can she take it upon herself to build her own water service off of Eleventh Street? Can she pay those costs herself to go from her meter?
Just her house only to Eleventh?
To Eleventh Street?
If she built it to our standards, uh, would that be a problem?
Well, they're talking water service and main, and our ordinance says main extension, it doesn't say water service extension.
Oh.
So we'd be doing something different.
You might want to check and see what those price differences are between, you know, drilling a well and adding this spur or whatever you want to call it from Eleventh, if that's possible, agrees to something like that. Do you might want to check how much that's going to cost, I don't know who you check with, Dobley?
Uh, Redman.
They're front-end load, so, yeah. So are you saying that if I wanted to, Ron, if I'm directing this toward you, on the side that I've already put that shut-off valve, you know, from where I was going to do my open, run a main line or what do you want to call it, a main line down to Eleventh Street? That I can tap into that main?
If, yeah, there's a valve, um, valve bags on those intersections that were put in for the extensions.
Will that might be your, your best solution then, okay? Sorry, we couldn't, couldn't elaborate, please.
So she decides to do that, then she just defies for permit with the?
Um, then you have to set in a set of plans that are engineered and are, are approved by the town engineer and the council, but they have to be engineered, yes, that's probably what it said. And you may have some luck, you know, if Sam, if they can't use their, you know, if they're not drinking their wet water and a few more down there.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, I'm just confused, if she could do this without annexing or she has to annex?
She could do that without?
She can do that herself, right, it's just her cost.
We've extended mains and approved it, the Forest, you know, that developer put one in.
But she's talking about putting in her own individual service to the main.
We're talking, we're talking main, it doesn't say service, it says main extension.
See, that's, that's why I.
And extend street to street, correct.
It's supposed to.
It goes from one intersection to the next.
We stopped it up there on E Street.
So I'd have to go from Eleventh to Tenth?
That, our, our ordinance says to the next flooded street, yeah, yes.
Now, we made an exception on E Street, if you recall, because the county was having a, a problem with the, um, us digging up the county road to build, you know, the pavement, uh, to put the, the, the main in. So we actually ended up only going about halfway down the block, uh, to where we got to Terry Uplake's property, so.
That's something we should.
So that was an exception that we have to be able to.
Okay, to be clear then, Sandy can, with engineered plans to our standards, she doesn't have to annex, but she can go from her house to Eleventh Street and tie into that main, is that what you're saying?
A main extension, not a service extension, a main.
A main extension.
Yes.
So she never main extension, are you saying if it doesn't have service, she doesn't have water? I think that's, we, we don't understand the difference.
Main is a large diameter pipe, a service.
To service more than one.
Right, yeah.
If she does that, if she.
Main would service more than one and, and the, yeah, and then the service thing would just be to your house, is that?
But it would still be about maybe two inches?
Uh, we have standards, so.
Well, if she does that in the four inch and then somebody in the future wants to tie in and take it back charges.
I believe the ordinance says the minimum size is six inch.
Six?
Six inch main, yeah.
And that's the main?
And all the mains have been extended down there, the one going down the highway is at least an eight and so was the one down Eleventh. And the one that, that, um, I think was a six inch that, uh, Mr. Utterly didn't put in on E Street.
So what about the service line then, what does that have to be?
Well, then it can be a three-order or a one-inch line.
So then it's a one inch.
So put it in English to me, what she needs to do, that she can do.
I, I.
Build a, a, a main extension from Eleventh Street, and I'm going to say Tenth Street, because that's what our ordinance says, uh, at our standards, whether, that's probably a six-inch line. And then her, then, then, then her service for her house would come off of that in front of her house. And her meter would be there on that service meter, service line, not the main line. You know, the, the reason they did that, of course, is they wanted to get, when, when extensions are made, they didn't want to go part of the block, they wanted to go a full block in order to, to, to.
Get other people.
Make it available, you know, get other people hooked up, you know, make it available, do a systematic, uh, build-out of the system as that you know.
It could be that some of your neighbors are not living in their homes, I don't know for sure, but maybe they're not living there because of the water system situation. Decided to go somewhere, they could take a shower.
If, if she were to do this and other people like say on either side of her said, yeah, we'll do that, they still don't have to annex, they can just become service units, so they share the cost with you, but they don't have to annex for, for you stay.
I think that sharing of the cost is in an agrai, in an arrangement that I believe, I'm thinking that Mr. Bogart has maybe helped put it together, but it really wasn't our, our agreement. The only part role we laid in that is if a new person came along that wanted to hook up to those people's line that they built, they invested in, then we, we, our, our role was to make sure that they contacted the people who were entitled to recover something.
And there was three or four hookups.
That's happened on that main, yeah. So if it costs you $20,000 and you hook up five people, you know, you're, you're over a period of, or even immediately, you know, maybe your cost is only $4,000. Now, I've been saying it's only going to cost $20,000, that's probably low, but, but it's easy figures. I can divide five into twenty pretty easy, so.
Does that give you a direction on how to go with Sandy?
It's cheaper than oil.
Check how much you would drill.
Right.
Is there any exception that she could tap in just a service line from that main? Because she, I mean, it's all she needs.
Not by our, just by planning or by ordinance, I'm not sure which, but.
Is there any long-term planning by the city to, I mean, now that she maintains lines and people pay their water service bill to you, the city, is there long-term range planning to?
I don't think we have our sights on any annexation at this time, do we?
As Ray was saying a minute ago, the, the priorities would be with those who are residents of the town of Lakeview.
Yeah, we've got mains falling apart here.
So annexation would mean that you can become that.
And in order to get the water down there, we got to keep the mains upgraded.
And if there are mains that have been built outside of town that we have accepted.
We are.
Uh, then we are responsible for maintaining those and if they need to be replaced in time, you know, we would be the ones left to do that, uh, that we don't build them initially.
All right, I'll close this discussion, and sorry, we couldn't be more or quicker help to you. Oh, you had something else?
Did you want to say?
Uh, yeah, you're free to leave that. Okay, thanks, thank you. Okay, well, any other public comment? We'll go ahead and move into communication comments and informational items. We had a new fire information added to your packet tonight, the rest of it's pretty good.
Are you going to go chase butterflies up the Crater Lake?
Pardon?
Are you going to go chase butterflies up the Crater Lake?
Uh, no, I probably will be missing that myself, but feel free to, to go and represent us. Yes.
I noticed the sign upstairs at 7:00 AM somewhere.
Yeah, okay, we'll go ahead and move into department reports, committee minutes and updates. Uh, I guess the only ones we have here is Mr. Wilkie from Public Works, do you have any, anything to add, Ron?
Uh, we should be getting a new controller for the little, um, made of coloring acid feeder for the waiting pool. We're having issues with that.
And I know you guys, I mean, noticed, did you write in there that you did receive the full cover and that seemed to be working well, right?
Is that online, ready, it's being used over?
This, this last weekend.
I, I have a question on the fire department, um, report. If it's an illegal fire, do, do we charge them for the services that we send out to put that out?
It was probably like a burn barrel.
Well, I don't know, on this letter, there was like several illegal burns, illegal burn, illegal burn. And so I wondered if since it's a need, do we fine them for something or otherwise that will never stop?
It's typically, the first time is all morning. We, we go, they put out the fire or make them put it out and, and it's, or you get the first ones kind of, you're warning, after that we can charge.
There, of these, there's what, four, at least of them are illegal burns, so. Okay, that was another question I have.
Go ahead and move into the consent calendar, which is October, financials, November and May, available to town hall. The June 2014 accounts payable, they're missing from your packet, so scratch that in the, uh, we have a motion. And then also, it wasn't listed, but part of the consent calendar is the minutes from the June 24th, um, council meeting.
Scratch which one?
Uh, scratch E, the June 2012 AP. And if there's no other questions or corrections, I accept a motion.
I will, we approve the consent calendar as presented by Mayor Patrick.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second, approve the consent calendar as presented with corrections. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, those opposed? Most are carried unanimously, I did, I knew you all said ayes, so. We'll go ahead and move into council updates. And that's some things here, we've got a really nice, uh, thank you card addressed to the council for some generous gift of family pool passes. Do you know, what was that for, the swim meet, is that?
Uh, this, I believe it's for closer from all of our, uh, dispatchers, the people that had signed that, I think that.
No, it's signed by, oh, it is the.
It's all of our dispatchers.
Dispatch, okay, I'm sorry, I misread that too, I thought that was slip to you, so, so, uh, that goes to the council, so thank you. I helped Dawn Moore with the Fairgrounds, uh, Dawn Moore, the Fairgrounds manager with Fourth of July festivities and I, uh, I did a 15-minute stint in the Dunk Tank, it's, I want to clarify, it's not the drunk tank, uh, the Dunk Tank. It was a fundraiser for next year fireworks. There was Sheriff Phil McDonald, Fire Chief Dennis Borrow, our district attorney, uh, Yola Stapleton and several others. And it was very cold water, I must tell you, but it was fun.
So you didn't hit the water?
So in lieu of being dunked, could the dunky write a check maybe to avoid having to get in a cold?
If I'd have known how cold that water was, I would have gladly given them a check, yeah. I'd have paid them $2 not to throw those three bones. Uh, I, while I was out at the, um, Fourth of July, some folks came over to me, they, they knew that I was the bearer of the town and they wanted to congratulate this town on being so friendly, so nice. They had just stopped in, they were traveling through, they said, what a wonderful little town we have. Um, and the other thing they said is they had stopped and looked at the MC Chuck Wagon exhibit and they really enjoyed that. So it's always nice to get compliments from somebody going through, but, uh, was, was really nice to receive those compliments. And then, um, one last thing, I've been invited on behalf of the town to welcome the antique aircraft visitors that are coming to town, I believe it's on the 19th or something like that, I have it in my.
Twenty-first.
So what is it?
Twenty-first.
Okay, anyway, uh, I would, I have accepted and I will go out and welcome on that. And then later on in our packet, we have some correspondence covering some of that, so that's all I have. Sandy?
I have nothing to report.
We're, we've been postponing our chamber meetings, uh, because of all the activities so far, so we haven't had a meeting in our first, they're usually at the first Thursday, and that was right in the middle of the whole Fourth of July and Festival Flight. And I haven't talked to her, I don't know how successful Festival Flight, I didn't see very many people in the air and saw fewer cars, I thought.
I think the wind was a real killer on that this year.
It was, on two, at least two nights.
Yeah.
So I, I didn't know how, how that came out, but, uh, and I did think that the Fairground did a lovely job. I think it's maybe something we have to build if there were. did a lovely job. I think it's maybe something we have to build if they're willing to do that kind of work, but, uh, my theory is if you have fried bread, I will come. So, but I, you know, there were people out there, that kids section was just crammed, so they were having a grand time. I thought it was a really nice addition to the weekend.
Okay, Michael?
Uh, the Warner Mountain, Friends of the NRA are holding their banquet on the 19th, which is a Saturday evening. It'll be at the fairgrounds. Uh, it will be catered by the Cowboy Grubs. I think that's who it's catered by.
Yummies? Yummies Cowboy?
Okay.
The wind?
Is it yummies?
Yeah.
The cowboy?
Yeah, I guess it is, yeah. Anyway, uh, but that's that night. Dinner tickets are $35 for the dinner. And then there's the silent as well as a live auction and lots of requirements and things like that that will be auctioned off.
Twenty-two shells?
No, 22 shells are impossible to get.
I, I know.
And, oh, the tickets can be purchased at Gusteau Computing and at KVE, Polaris dealership.
They're having their St. Hooker run on that same weekend?
KVE?
Uh-huh.
I think so.
I believe they are.
Yeah. But the, the Friends of the NRA banquet, it's, it's a lot of fun. They've raised a lot of money. They've done a lot as far as getting NRA, uh, scholarships and grants for building the, yeah, for, for building up there in the, in the Bullard Canyon for the, 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 the kind of, etc.
Thank you. Mike?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Ray?
Well, Mike could have reported about it. We've been, we, we did have another meeting with, uh, I think since we reported last with, uh, Red Rock, Yough People's phone conference. We continue to meet with them. Uh, there's probably maybe some scheduling change, Mike, with the next meeting that we plan on the 22nd.
Wasn't that supposed to award on July the 1st or something there?
First part, there's, first part of July, they said, they told us at our last conference call that they thought by the 15th of July, so first half of July. They're supposed to be, they, they believe that they will know if they've been selected as one of the, of the two projects that will go forward with the Department of Defense. So, uh, we continue to negotiate with them regarding a community service fee with, uh, with the county for the use of the enterprise zone benefits. And quite honestly, it's tough, but we're working on it.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay. Kristy, this is going to be your last meeting with us, so do you got anything you'd like to report?
Um, I hope I don't leave it too much of a mess. Amy's, Amy's catching on really, really quick and it's.
Excellent.
Pretty steep learning curve.
Yeah. We've, we've crammed a lot into this speed age, so, plus I'm training her up front too for utility, so. She's getting double, she's getting cross-trained.
Okay.
We do have a planning meeting, what, tomorrow night?
Monday.
Next.
Next Monday?
Next Monday.
Oh, okay.
I didn't really look at the dates. I don't want to do. Always on Monday extended.
Go ahead and move along. Uh, we have no old business. I'll move into new business. The first is, um, correspondence from Lakeview Swim Team for the street closure. You guys, uh, you all have your, your letter there and we've always granted them permission for this closure to pass, so any reason not to or any discussion about it?
At least since they're going to hold some fundraisers later in the summer to benefit the pool, which I thought was really pretty nice of them.
If there's.
I would just move that we approve the Lakeview Swim Team, Swim Team, street closure as requested for the weekend of July 12th and 13th.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to second to approve the Lakeview Swim Team's street closure request. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
They do know they have to get with, uh, Chief Kemp and.
They do.
Set that up.
Actually, yeah, either talking with them or reading in this.
I usually put out a bunch of codes. They're lining the bank and then they're next to the various, and then they stretch them across the woods.
Okay. Our next item is the chamber. It's the antique aircraft use of the MC chuck wagon property. Um, before we go on in that, I, I guess it's our entity where we can certainly grant permission to do that. The only thing out of the ordinary is they are requesting street closure also, as you can read in here. Uh, they've pretty much cleared it with everybody, so any discussion from the council?
I'll make sure we have.
That fits within the usage that they've kind of had agreed with the Niels family? I mean, is that?
Is it on the weekend?
I agree with you. Is that, I think that's excellent.
It highlights it even without their sign.
What's the date on it, on the request?
Pardon?
21st.
21st, July 21st.
What day of the week is that?
Monday.
Monday.
I.
Pardon?
What did you think about need to make sure that we know that, that the water?
Flooded out.
They can have bathrooms. There's, there's no bathrooms there.
They can run across the street and let, wow.
Do you know that's?
They maybe, maybe we should comment that they should probably talk to one of the two service providers for porta potties.
That's a good point. I, I missed that too. They, they probably ought to, Ray, would you contact them and?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about a motion from the council to approve that with the, the little candy out there or whatever, that they put a couple porta potties?
I'd make a motion that if they do provide porta potty services for the public attendance at the event, that that usage be condoned and that we block off the street there at the site.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to second to, um, approve the request from the Lake County Chamber of Commerce for the street closure on the 21st with the addition of a couple of porta potties for the general public. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, our last item, uh, here about a month ago, I handed these things out, the review and prioritize the League of Oregon Cities' legislative priorities for 2015. Uh, I hope everybody kind of got a chance to, to look at that.
Well, yes.
Okay.
And then I, I thought we got one choice for each priority.
You can, you can make one, all of them out of any one that you want.
Yeah, so we only get four choices out of all of those.
Yeah, out of all of them. Exactly.
I, I wasn't real happy about G.
About which ones?
G, three percent, two percent, that's a 3% discount for your payment.
That's definitely one we don't want.
I, I would say three on that. That's what I didn't like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I, I like, um, really, well, never mind.
So you want to, you want to make that, um.
Eliminate it, Ken.
Something on shoes, it was our prior, to defeat it would be my priority if it comes up. I don't think if it cuts on the ballot, the children would get it passed.
I know there's an awful lot of people out there that think the rich are getting advantages.
They think the what?
The 3%?
Yeah, that, the, those, of, those people that can pay their taxes are getting an advantage, an unfair advantage. So I can, I'm not sure they're wicking it down. There's an awful lot of poor folk out there right now.
But, but why, why would they feel that that's an advantage if you're smart enough to save your money through the years and you can afford to pay that and make your 3%? I think you're entitled to it.
Well, but it also, it also takes away, um, would phase out the discount, uh, for those other dates and 2% offered to pay two-thirds. I mean, that if you can't pay it all on that first date, then you split it and you pay a third and you still get a bit of a discount and you pay it that way. And that gets rid of that part of it too. And that is supportive of people who have more issues, I guess.
And my comment was to the fact when you said you couldn't imagine it, you'd be voted down.
I can always, yeah, I can always, yeah.
Yeah.
That's probably true, but.
I did, I liked J were the reform of the recall.
That was my favorite.
Yeah, because I'm just sick and tired of these signs all over town for recalling everybody. I think that.
One that's happening in all other counties and cities all over the place.
Yeah, it is. You know, I think that right now you're a failure if you're not, someone's not trying to recall you.
Yeah, we were supposed to be fired.
I know, remember that.
Raised my hopes like that.
So the consent of the council that, that J would be one of.
J would be one that we would check on there as.
Well, it's.
One of our priorities.
It comes pretty expensive, doesn't it? I mean, you turn in a petition and somebody has to go through all those things and checking the signatures and.
About $2,500, I think, to do a spatial election.
Yeah, that's here.
Yeah, that's just here, yeah.
So I think if you're looking at saving money for your county, that's a good one. Yeah.
I'd like to go back to, to number I on, on taxation finance. I think it's having to do with the current tax, lodging tax. And I, I think that there are a lot of downfalls in the lodger's tax system here in the state of Oregon, and we fall as the town of Lakeview under one of those criteria that doesn't really get as much mileage. The majority of the lodger's tax funds that are generated in the area are generated right here in Lakeview, in Lakeview proper. And so, you know, I think that needs to be looked at if, if there's any possibility of us moving perhaps towards a lodger's tax here in the town.
I will tell you this, that lodging taxes is what supports the chamber commerce.
I understand.
So it's pretty important that they keep that kind of revenue trend for themselves.
Did you read what it says?
Yeah, it's at 70%.
What it meant for?
Tourism.
So if it supports the, the chamber, then in fact, it shouldn't be supporting them. Their membership should be supporting them. And so, you know, the, the dollars from lodger's tax, and I served on, on many a lodger's tax board in previous communities that I've been in, and it's dear to the heart of each community to spend that money so that it is returned to the community in a proper fashion. Uh, you know, you've got to turn the dollar. That's what lodger's taxes are all about. You've got to build hotels, meaning build. And so I, I just think that should be a priority because the state has identified through economic development that tourism is one of our main priorities.
Yeah, would, would you want to put that as, as one of the priorities?
I, I think it should be, and I think we didn't really need to look at, at that. They say that's to improve clarity and certainty, and I think we maybe should prod them. And maybe they won't dump something back on us like they did marijuana.
Maybe they'll take the buck up, take the responsibility.
The L, are we looking at L?
Work it out with eyes.
Enhance medical marijuana dispensary regulations?
Well, first of all, let's finish up with the I.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mention any. I, I didn't think we've, all I was saying is before it's dumped back in, you know, individuals' laps, I'm, I'm deciding to clarity.
Well, it's so.
It should be decided by the state.
I and J is two of our choices here.
I and J, yes.
Okay. And.
Well, the, the other one we were talking about was the marijuana clarify L, which is.
Which we asked you to ask.
Clarify and enhance medical marijuana dispensary. But are we wasting a vote if we actually pass recreational marijuana in the ball?
I think they'll still be medical marijuana.
You think they'll be separate?
Those are, those are a lot closer watched and those people need their medical prescriptions to pacify what they're in need of. And so I think that'll always be a different type of store.
You think they'll have.
Maybe, you know, one, one side of the store may be medical purposes and the other may be recreational, but.
I'd beer in Washington. Why is it sick of beer and donuts?
Oh, it's dairy donuts.
Yeah.
I think Washington started the day and I, you know, I'm, I'm sure that, that we are probably going to get recreational in the state of Oregon from all of the news reports that I see that were next in line after Alaska. I'm not, I'm not sure that's.
Does Washington have a medical marijuana? Do you know how they've handled it up there with the two dispensaries or is there two or what?
They are, I think they, they, I don't know that they have a medical marijuana. I'm not sure that they were.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, no.
I thought.
Go ahead.
I, I just thought that when I looked at that, that no matter what, we had so many issues with that and the, what, time, place, and manner. And we kept asking and asking about that. And so I think that, uh, we, we need to spotlight that, that clarity. We're looking for clarity.
Well, the other thing that they mentioned here, which I thought of previously also is that people who work in the store do not have to have background checks. Background checks, and I think that's essential.
Hey, guys, I, Mike personally, I think that, that the higher levels are going to hash and rehash the marijuana issue from the town. I don't think that we ought to use one of our votes, you know, or one of our priorities on that. I, I think it's out of our hands, pretty much.
It has been all along.
Yeah, right, yeah. Let's, you know, I'd rather move on to, I've got a, kind of this telecommunications is one that.
What numbers?
It's Q and it's, um.
Oh.
Or, you know, it's actually Q or R, and R is the one that opposes legislation, legislation preempting the ability of cities to manage and receive compensation for the use of public row, you know? And I, I think the cities need to maintain all the, all the power that we do have, as limited as, as it is, but I really would oppose the legislature stepping in and taking that. So I'd rather go with R than I would with marijuana, so.
I would try to agree.
Does anyone do that?
R and, well, not S. I, there was a lot in S, I thought, too. Transportation, it's a 5% gas, but it also gets down here to increase the small city allotment from 1 million to 5 million.
Mm-hmm, I saw that.
And that would be in our best interest, right, or my?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, see, that was something I liked. And I don't know licensing lightweight trailers. I thought you had to have that anyway, but, uh, I looked at S and thought that sounds like something that would benefit, uh, our area, but.
The only one that bothers me is a gas tax increase about the 5 cents. That, that part of that whole bill just about shoots.
I know, I respect.
But, but as an overall package, I, I kind of agree with you on it.
Maybe that's the one thing nobody will agree on, so we'll take it out.
One of the things that I also wanted to bring up before we vote on S is enhancement to health services. I know that the, uh, the community health things, uh, that, that we, the CHIP program was doing, uh, through the hospital and all, uh, that was one of the things that the community in Lakeview and, and Lake County, I'm sorry, asked before in enhancement and, and mental health services.
I saw that, oh, with M.
Yeah, M. So I would be, you know, I, I know we've already got three and now we're looking at M and S.
Well, we, we need to go, but which, which, from the count, which is, uh, most important or which do you guys think? I, I agree, both are pretty, pretty needed.
I think I like the mental health thing because it's a huge problem with so many of these shootings going on. It's, it's not really the fault of guns, it's the fault of somebody not getting treatment for a mental health problem. And it's very, very hard to diagnose things like that in the first place, but, um, it's a huge nationwide problem that, that we have that particular problem here, right?
My problem with this is that, and I agree, it is vitally important. You just understand me? I think that's vitally important. But when, when I read it, I thought, is that just another one of those surveys that we're going to look into this issue and we're going to spend a whole lot of money like they do on the roads, surveying for the new road that they're never going to build?
Yeah.
And that was my problem. And they got down here, should be examined holistically to ensure the Oregon is providing the best possible care. So you spend all the money doing the evaluation and you have no money left to put in the benefits.
The answer is no.
Yeah, see, that, yeah.
No, not, okay.
We know it's a problem, of course, but that was the only thing that bothered me about stuff like that. And maybe I'm just jaded about those things.
Well, I, I kind of agree with you on that part of them and the other parts of increased gas tanks on, on S, so, you know. gas tax on, on S, so, you know.
Well, the mental health issue has another problem, you cannot force people into it unless they've already committed an act of broken law someplace.
Not proactive.
And I would like to think that that is being looked at through different organizations, and maybe that's not something that we need to be kind of involved with, just for.
Mike, that's what I was going to say, Michael, I, I guess, in, in Lake County at least, historically, mental health programs as far as services coming down from the state come to the county, and then they provide some kind of a countywide mental health services. There are some private practitioners, you know, to some degree, but, you know, that, at least in Lake County, I, I'm not, I wouldn't say that that's the case all across the state, maybe if you're in the big cities, you know, Multnomah County, Portland, maybe Portland, the city of Portland has, provides mental health services, can, you know, alongside Multnomah County, I don't know. But we do know that gas tax and, and the impact of the transportation system and the cost of maintaining it in towns, as I've stated every year, I believe in our budget message is that that's one of the, one of the problem areas I see with, with the town, is that we don't have resources coming in to adequately take care of, of transportation needs, and I'm not sure, you know, five cents a gallon probably isn't going to fix that, and probably 5 million in a city's, old city allotment isn't going to fix it, but it'll help with individual projects, but, you know, we do need to be, and it's one of the things I've talked about whenever I've had a chance, is we've got to figure out some way to help cities maintain their, their infrastructure, but counties, as adequate or inadequate as may be, have forced receipts or the forced funds that come into them, and, and of course, the state uses gas taxes, we get a little gas tax money, but we're, we're, we're on the bottom end of the stick, and we don't get enough. So, from my perspective, I think dealing with transportation-related costs are important to us, more so probably than mental health.
Council, you want to go with S over M then?
S and M?
Hmm.
That was our choice.
Right.
Oh, that's right. Dang, I forget you were filming this.
I was already thinking of a headline. The council approves S and M.
Okay, we'll stop that conversation, S then, I guess, would be our next, last one?
S is fine.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
All right, I'll, I'll make sure that Amy gets S or Christie, and that we get this fired off. Thank you, council, that's.
So what, what for did you?
Okay, we went with I for improved, improved clarity and certainty around transit lodging tax, we did J, reform Oregon's recall procedures, R, oppose legislation preempting the ability of cities to manage and receive compensation for the use of public row, and S, pass a comprehensive transportation funding and policy package, so that's our votes, okay? Thank you.
That was painful than I expected. Pardon? That was less painful than I expected.
I, I, it was, it could have been more painful, it's because my notes disappeared somehow, but Christie, see this?
I left that.
See this on, right here, says save for the June 8th meeting, was on top of all that, when we dug it out of the garbage can.
She didn't realize it was this year.
Oh, okay, that's.
I told him, if you want anything saved, you can call, put a sticky on it, you put an orange star sticky, and I still threw out.
Oh, that's okay, all right, that's all we have on our Jennifer evening, we have no executive session.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, Christie, this is your last time to be with us in a meeting, I, I want to thank you personally, you know, you've been here during my tenure as the counselor, and I appreciate you being there and helping us out here in the town of Lakeview and the place, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, gonna miss you.
For any of you who are available and want to, we're going to have lunch at noon Thursday at Eagles' house.
When?
This Thursday.
Thursday noon at the Eagles' house.
I'm sorry, I'll have a crouton in the south.
Yes.
All right, all right, thank you, Christie, we do all appreciate it.
Let me know if you would, so we make sure we've got enough space.
I, I will.
And we got Mike, I named Mike.
What is that date, 10?
Uh.
I'm, I'm supposed to go to the Lexington meeting, I didn't want to have anything to report for me.
We can ask you for a report on Christie's retirement.
Sure.
Okay, any other, any other thing before the council? If not, I will adjourn the meeting at 4:55. Thank you.